Board of Education, please stand for the flag. The flag is raised in the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
The statement is out of good notice.
Theing Act, Chapter 231, active notes of this meeting have been provided as follows. On January 10th, 2018, numbers sent to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, Local Source, and the Park of the Municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein as is allowed at the regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the Sunshine Law.
Roll call.
Mr. Shahada?
Here.
Mrs. Bellani? Mrs. Welsh?
Here.
Mrs. Baviana?
Present.
Mrs. Birch?
Here.
Mrs. Guillaume? Miss Guillaume? Miss Cosack?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Here.
Mr. Tapleski?
Here. Approval minutes, accept the motion.
I move the minutes from the lesbian.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mrs. Welsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Baviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Cosack?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Tapleski?
Yes. Comments from the public for agenda items only? Seeing Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Board members, community members, faculty, and staff. If you haven't, please take note of the Superintendent's report. There are copies up on the stage. This is a monthly report, a newsletter that's published each month on the day of our Board of Education meetings. It's also sent out electronically through email and on social media tomorrow. It's an interactive newsletter, contains short articles. They give a rundown of recent events that have been going on in our district, and it'll be linked to a larger story. Sometimes there's more photos than a video of the story. This month, you'll see various activities that occurred in our district. Included was a visit from the New Jersey Commissioner of Education, which was a great honor for our school district to have the active commissioner, Dr. Lamont Repel, come to our district, visit our schools. And he really came for two reasons. One, he told me he heard about a lot of the great things that were going on in Linden. But two, he was doing a listening tour of the state on the next generation of assessments that are going to replace the PARC exam. He told me in no uncertain terms that PARC is going away.
Yay!
That will be replaced by something else.
Woohoo!
Of course, there are many other outstanding things that we do in our district each month, so please, if you haven't read one, please read one and take a look. I'd like to publicly thank Phillips 66, which is the Bailey Refinery, for those of you who don't know the actual name, it changed a few times. This year, Phillips 66 donated $80,000, $80,550 to our district to purchase FOSS kits, full option science kits, for our K-2 science curriculum. This grant includes the books, the materials, for our students to conduct investigations. Students learn to take notes on their investigations and have discussions on their findings. So I want to publicly thank Phillips 66 for supporting our students and science education in the Linden Public Schools. This Thursday night is our senior prom. I wish all of our seniors a great time, a safe time. It's at Addison Park, a beautiful place. I know our students will have an enjoyable night, I just hope that they're safe. Parents, please speak to your children, make sure that they have a means to get to the prom and home safely. Next Wednesday, May 30th, we'll have our annual All-City Music and Art Festival at the Promenade on Wood Avenue. If you have not had the opportunity to see that, please come out. It's been about four or five years now since we've had it outside of the Promenade, and it features our elementary bands, our high school, middle school orchestras, our choir, and our touring troops. Begins at 7:00 p.m. The end of the school year is fast approaching. The last day of school for students is June 22nd. Last day for teachers is June 25th. Our high school graduation will be held on June 22nd at 10:00 a.m. at Tyger Stadium. If there is inclement weather at 10:00 a.m., we'll move the ceremony to 1:00 p.m. And if there is still inclement weather, we will have the event at 6:00 p.m. in the gymnasium. Which, I might add, we have not had to have a graduation in the gymnasium since we installed air conditioning. I say it every year, this is what keeps us satisfied. Trust me. June 5th is our local scholarship awards night. Each year, individual donors from the local community, individual businesses and companies from Linden and the surrounding towns donate thousands and thousands of dollars in scholarships to Linden High School seniors. On Tuesday night, June 5th, is our local scholarship awards night, where we'll be recognizing those people who give and those students who are receiving those donations. So please come out, and if you have any extra money you want to donate, our students will accept it. You can see me afterwards. Board members, we have a couple presentations tonight. One of them is a short video, so I'd ask if we can go have a seat down, down new over. Is Mr. LaMastro here? Mr. LaMastro, would you join me, please? Mr. LaMastro is our supervisor of ELL and World Languages in the district, and he brought to my attention that one of our outstanding seniors received a prestigious award, and we'd like to recognize her tonight. The American Association of Teachers of French, the AATF, is pleased to announce that Bermuda Pierre has received the 2018 AATF Outstanding Senior in French Award. This award is made annually to a graduating senior who has demonstrated excellence in the study of French, as well as an exceptional commitment to the French language and the many cultures where it is spoken. Recent events of this award must have completed at least three years of French study and be non-native speakers of French. Bermuda, are you here tonight? Bermuda, please come up and join us. I happen to know this outstanding young lady really well. She's one of my superintendent student ambassadors. She studied French for four years. She's a French Club officer. What's National French Week? You're not sure? Okay, well, she didn't do National French Week, that was my mistake. She's a French National Honor Society officer, and really just an outstanding student. And if she looks familiar, for those of you regulars who come to our board meetings, there's not many of you that are regulars that come to our board meetings. She was here a few months ago with a proposal for the board, where she proposed creating a wall of honor at Linden High School for our seniors who graduate and go into the military. And the board was so moved by her presentation that not only did they approve it, but two of our board members donated their own personal money to help make sure that it's getting done. So she's an outstanding young lady. She deserves all the recognition that she can get. So Bermuda, we have this wonderful certificate for you. And... ...this beautiful medal. Just like to add, when people have so many achievements, sometimes it's easy to miss one or two, and there are a couple things that really stand out to me I'd like to share. She's one of 35 students who earned the Seal of Bile literacy, which is huge. The bar is set very high. Students need to be able to do academic work in two languages in order to receive the test score that gets them that New Jersey Seal of Bile literacy. Congratulations to you for that. She's also an IB diploma candidate and is doing outstanding work in that program too. So we're just all very proud of those achievements. Congratulations, Bermuda. Thank you, Mr. LaMastro, for bringing this onto my attention. I'd like to introduce one of our high school social studies teacher, former Union County Teacher of the Year, former Linden High School Teacher of the Year. But I think once you get that honor, you're always that. Ms. Gonzalez, would you join me at the podium, please? Stefani, you can put the video in. Ms. Gonzalez is one of the principal founders of the Pass the Message On program here in Linden, in conjunction with the Union County Human Relations Commission, Linden Police Department also, which is a bias and prejudice reduction program. Juniors and seniors find creative ways to teach freshmen and middle schoolers about bias and ways to stop it. So I want Ms. Gonzalez to tell you a little bit more about her program, and then we're going to watch a short video. We were honored to have Classroom Close-Up, which is the TV show, come into Linden High School and film a segment with Mrs. Gonzalez and her students. And I believe our students are here tonight. We will recognize the students after the video. Ms. G, would you tell the audience about your program?
Good evening, everybody. So every year for the last seven years, I take a group of juniors and seniors, and we receive training in different aspects of bias and prejudice in order to hopefully be able to fight these prejudices that happen. And over the years, we've developed a program in which we allow our students who get training and go through these workshops to create a program that they would present to their own fellow students. So that they create the program, and I'm there to guide them in the right direction, as well as Linden Police Department Karen from Union County and Dr. Paul Aguirre, socialist, and they get various trainings. And then our students create the program, and then they deliver their program. So they own it, they create it, and they're absolutely amazing every single year. This year, we were very fortunate to have Classroom Close-Up come in and do a record our program, since it's been recognized for a number of years. And I have to say that without words, these students are amazing and absolutely wonderful and astonishing in what they are able to accomplish every year. So thank you, students.
Douglas's kid always seemed happy, no matter what. Although he was a guy, he acted a bit more feminine. A group of students used to bully him, saying he was gay. Nobody knew about it though. Until January 28th, after baseball practice, I got a phone call from my friend saying he had killed himself.
One time, I was being dropped off to daycare and a lady shouted, "The milkman is here." She said this because my dad dropped me off and meaning that my mom was white and my dad is black is why they called him the milkman. At the time, I didn't notice how racist that time was towards my dad, yet I didn't notice how we shared it to him while the white side was me.
There are some people out there that are so questioning, and there are some people out there that are dealing with the stresses of bullying and how that affects their own identity. Because when you get bullied, you're kind of in this place where you're like, "Who am I?" You know, they're saying stuff about me, and I'm in the process of creating myself. So when they put those ideas into my head, I start to believe it.
Stories like these, told by students, are part of a program called Pass the Message On, focusing attention on serious issues.
Disagreement? Bullying and this conception to be well thoughted, like others racist, but I did.
You're black girl, why do you speak like that? You're a black girl, how come you don't dress like one? Why can't I just be me? And I have to worry about somebody's face?
The message I think that we're trying to convey is that even though we have different skin colors and stuff, we're all the same underneath, and that shouldn't matter where we come from or like how we look. We should all just be treated the same.
This is something we're always going to have to talk about. You know, this is something that's always going to have to stay in motion, so I think it's very important to just talk about these topics and not make them a taboo.
Pass the Message On is orchestrated by juniors and seniors from teacher Monica Gonzalez's history classes.
Now, a photo paper, smooth it out and get it fits original shape. This is the same principle that happens when people are bullied. Even if there's a sincere apology, the sky never goes completely away.
As a teacher, I walk through the hallways and I notice how students react with each other, and I can say the exact same words that a fellow student says, and they're perceived and taken very differently. So I knew there was power in our students. And I saw that our students had a story to say, and they wanted to say it, they just didn't know how to say it or have an outlet as to where to say it. So we started putting our heads together, how are we going to do this? And we said, okay, we're going to put a program together, a workshop, and we took it to the students.
The project was developed with the help of the Union County Human Relations Commission and other partners.
One of the missions that we have is to eradicate bias and prejudice and conditions that kind of cause them. So we looked to do a program in the schools and partnered with Dr. Paula Rodriguez-Rust, who is an incredible diversity educator, and also with Monica, who was gracious enough to open our purpose through classroom to us, and also the Linden Police Department.
The students who lead the program first take part in a series of workshops led by guest speakers who help them explore the causes and consequences of bias, prejudice, and hate, both in society at large and at home.
We talk about all different types of diversity. We certainly talk about racial and ethnic diversity, religious diversity, we talk about different stereotypes and prejudice, we talk about LGBT and transgender diversity, age, weight, even height, all kinds of differences between people. Things that might seem trivial to somebody else can really impact someone else's life.
She really shows the students how sometimes something that they think is meaningless, they think is just trivial that they say, really has a hidden meaning behind it. So she really does a great job of bringing our students along. Then the Linden Police Department comes in and does another workshop with our students. They talk about Union County, Linden, city, and what's going on here.
Filled with new insights, students spend several weeks developing their presentation. How do you prepare for what you're going to present?
We all individually came up with scripts and what we wanted to do and what we wanted to express to these kids coming in, and we kind of put it together and made one uniform program, and we just practiced so hard.
So they present to freshmen and sophomores. And then the spring, we go into the middle schools, and then eventually we go into sixth, seventh, sometimes fifth grade students. We want to make sure we reach as many students as we possibly can.
Hey, look, it's her!
It's everybody's mom!
I mean, the drama. We perform two of our bully plays, which show off what could happen if things get out of control, which oftentimes they do.
She went home yesterday after and hung herself from the back porch.
Take a look at the sun over your table, there are little cards there. We would like you to write one positive message to somebody and pass it out throughout your day.
I feel like at least one person left feeling a different way that would make me feel like, okay, I at least accomplished something.
Finding who you are, your identity, and then realizing that everybody else has one too.
We have to accept that we're all different, and that's okay.
I'm going to be free from the burdens that hold me. Who are you?
As a teacher, it's amazing for me to watch my students put this together. It feels like it's theirs.
Everyone's amazing. I truly don't understand why people aren't accepting. I just want everybody to love one another, I think that's just like...
If you didn't know already, our students are incredible, led by incredible people. So, Ms. Gonzalez, please join me at the podium. I'd like to recognize Detective Steve Zavala-Carras from the Linden Police Department. Detective Steve, are you here? And Mrs. Karen Positton from the Union County Human Relations Commission, which is a career class. Mr. Tapleski, would you join us?
Nabay? Thomas?
I'm sorry.
Devon? Sophia? Jocelyn? Melanie? Naomi? Adra? Alex? Asia? And Taj. There are many more students who participate in this, they could not be here today, but these are wonderful representation of the students who were able to participate in this great program.
Now, you may well know that this is a Superintendent's report, and I'm not the Superintendent. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Ray Tapleski, I happen to be president of the Board of Education. What we're about to do now is something that I've been trying to do for about 18 years. Now, we know that education moves slow, but that's ridiculous. It all started back when I was teaching in East Brunswick in the mid-'90s, and my Board of Education recognized staff members for their 25th year of service. And, you know, we kind of, oh, big deal, wah-wah-wah, you know, those teachers are up to do. And when I came home and showed my wife what they did and stuff like that, she said, "Wow, that's great, how wonderful it is. Why don't they do that here in Linden?" So in 2000, when I did get elected to the board, I thought to myself, yeah, why don't we do that here in Linden? Well, here it is, 2018, and we're doing it here in Linden. Now, you may know that most of the people here, all of you who are here, know that you've been teaching for more than, or have been working for us for more than 25 years. Because the number was so great, we decided we had to split it up a little. So the recipients here tonight are 30 years and up. In the fall, we are going to have a second go-around, and that will be from 25, and those of your friends that are 29 and jealous will be recognized at that time. So, and then hopefully from then on, the board will continue to do this and recognize people when they age. I mean, I remember as a kid, the famous gold watch for 25 years. So, you know...
It's a little better. It's a little better than a gold watch. Maybe the last person who comes up will have to show what's in the bag.
All right, so we're going to start with your service most down to 30. So starting at the top, Principal Anthony Cataline, school for... 40 years. And it's my fraternity brother, so... Elementary computer technician Joseph Cataline. I didn't say 46, it's 46. It's 46, and Joe's 45. You couldn't, they didn't hire you right away? Just, you know, I went to the doctor's this morning, I'm having cataract surgery coming up, so that's, that's my excuse. Instructional teacher, instructional teacher, math host at McManus Middle School, Audrey Miller. Super of World Languages, bilingual and ESL, Alfoncina Padalhastro. Resource room at school one, Paul Barnhart. I was at camp counselor with this guy. Instructional teacher, coach, and math, Janice Hopper. Thirty-eight years. Supervisor of maintenance, Lawrence Miranda, thirty-second year. Teacher of special education at school one, Cynthia Walker. Custodian at the high school, Vincent Unai. Thirty-five years. School nurse at school ten, Susan Sandow. Teacher of physical education and health at the high school, Barbara Collison. Teacher of special ed at the high school, Patricia Donovan. Teacher of special education at Soul Middle School, Frank Lysick, thirty-two years. Teacher of physical education and health at school five, Clint, bring your hand. Thirty-two years. Maintenance, take my glasses here. Donald Rolindovich, thirty-two years. Teacher grade three at school ten, Laurie DiMarzo, thirty-two years. Teacher of English, Linden High School, William McMahon. You know, Danny wants me to say this because it's like a badge of courage or something, but has he ever been absent? Teacher of kindergarten at school one, Karen Mulligan, thirty-one years. And finally, instructional teacher, not finally, there's another list. Oh, you have another, see, somebody else had one on one page. Okay, not finally, because there's another page, surprise. Instructional teacher, coach, technology, for the district, Sally Stevens. Director of mathematics at the high school, and last thirty-one years of service, Mr. Richard Stolling. Paraprofessional at the high school for thirty-one years, Ed Bedrowitz. Learning disabilities teacher, court consultant at the high school, Laura Campbell, thirty-one years. Thank you. Teacher of special ed at the high school for thirty-one years, Cheryl English. Director of special ed, Maureen Stefano. Custodian at school ten for thirty-one years, Joe Danielle. Secretary of school ten, thirty-one years, Maria Lutkins. Crisis intervention here at the high school, thirty years. Now, Vito Chiauzo. And now, finally. Teacher of English, Linden High School, thirty years, Patricia Gerberli. Okay, we have two other employees. I don't know if they're here or not, they weren't on the list. Thirty-nine years of service, Liz Givens, is she here? And Laurie Tevlin, also at thirty years, but they're not here. And again, I just want to take this out for you, thank all the people up here for all their years of service to this school district. Thank you all. I just want to say to the board that, you know, when you proposed this idea, I had to say I was a little leery, skeptical that anybody would show up. But not only did they show up, I thought it was really moving, and I really think it was a nice tradition that you started here and it will continue now forever. So, thank you. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. There's no time to report for this meeting. I think we should just. Okay, there's one. Okay. Curriculum instruction report, Mrs. Bebiana.
Thank you, Mr. President. The curriculum instruction committee of our recommendation of superintendent schools and the assistant superintendent present the following forty-six motions to Linden More of Education for approval. Items one through nine deal with the approval of specialized programs for the placement of classified students, determination of specialized programs for classified students, the approval of payments for related services, the adjustment of tuition as per the NJDOE audit, the approval and termination of home instruction services, the approval of transportation, and the approval of therapy services. Item ten approves payment schedules for athletic events. Items eleven, sixteen, and seventeen grant permission to begin athletic practice sessions, summer weight training sessions, and summer workout sessions. Items twelve through fifteen enrolls to Linden High School as a member of the NJSIAA, authorizes payment of dues, and approves participation in the football playoffs and wrestling team championships. Item eighteen approves the use of an online sports registration application. Items nineteen through twenty-one approve food allowances, scouting fees, and gaming fees. Twenty-two amends board action, amends board action on past CNI reports. Twenty-three adopts revised curriculum. Twenty-four and thirty grant permission for use of facilities and school activities. Twenty-five approves district field trips and amendments to field trips. Twenty-six through twenty-nine approves training for district staff. Thirty-one approves professional development activities. Thirty-two approves online and summer school locations. Thirty-three and thirty-four recognize Linden High School students for outstanding achievements. Thirty-three and thirty-four recognize Linden High School students for outstanding achievements. Thirty-five grants approval for a King University professor to conduct their research study. Thirty-six grants permission for students and teachers to travel to Marika, Spain. Thirty-seven and thirty-eight approve contracts with Trentos for therapy and consultations. Thirty-nine and forty grants approval to enter into agreements for Title One D and Title One A services. Items forty-one through forty-five grant approval to submit the ESA SA application, the Title One D program plan, and agreement with the bilingual program waiver, and approves the readoption of policies for Title One schools. Item forty-six approves superintendent's determination and actions taken for all reported incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying as discussed at the April twenty-four, two thousand and eighteen regular meeting. Mr. President, I move curriculum instruction items one through forty-six in respect with us for a second.
Roll call.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mrs. Welch?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Guillaume?
Yes.
Mrs. Kozak?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes. Annual Operations Report, Mrs. Wong is absent, I will give the report. Items one, two, and three are the passing of former staff adopting Rotozy.
Thank you, Mr. Tapaleski. You know, it seems very strange to sit here tonight while for comment about someone who was sitting among us not less than about a year ago. And this morning I attended the funeral of Mr. Jack, Mr. John Jack Colvis, who was the second board president who we've lost over the past couple of years. Mr. Colvis was a well-respected member of our community. Very few people in our district and in our town earned the respect and love that Jack earned. He started his career with us as a teacher of English at Linden High School in nineteen seventy-one. He became one of the first administrators of our alternative and adult school in nineteen ninety-nine. He became principal of school number six and then principal of McManus Middle School until he retired from the district in two thousand and eleven. Not getting enough of the Linden Public School District, he decided to run for the Board of Education. And, you know, he just could never disassociate himself from the love he had for this community and for the kids, especially our students. So he was, soon after being elected to the, to the board, he served as board president for one year. Jack loved students, Jack loved his faculty. You ask any teacher that worked for Jack, they loved working for Jack, he was a great principal. He lit up when he was around students, he was a gentleman, he was smart, funny, kind. He was a historian, a fisherman, a botanist. And my favorite thing about Jack was he was a great storyteller. Great storyteller. Some of the stories he told of things that happened years ago, you'd be surprised, I'm gonna tell him that if those stories happened today, a lot of people would be getting fired. But there was no social media back then. Jack will forever be an integral part of this town, this community. He served this district with a sense of humility and dedication. He will miss, be missed by many and by me on a very personal level. But his legacy will live on in our district and we send our condolences to his family. We're also deeply saddened to learn this month of the death of Joe Mazzarella, who worked for the Linden Board of Education for almost forty years, thirty-nine years as an industrial arts teacher, starting at McManus Middle School and then retiring at Linden High School. And also the untimely death of Diane Yakapchuk, who worked for the Linden Board of Education for thirty-seven years. Diane's one of the few people who could say she taught the same grade level in the same school in the same classroom for her entire teaching career. Thirty-seven years, third grade at school two in the same classroom. Also offer our condolences to Diane and her family. Thank you, Mr. Tapaleski.
Any comments about this from, go ahead, Tracy.
Okay, let me try to think of this. Educator, principal, board member, confidant, leader, compassionate. These are only a few of many words that come to mind when I think of Mr. Colvis. I'd like to take this opportunity to express my deepest condolences to the Colvis family during this extremely difficult time. I would also like to thank his family for the many decades they shared him with us. Thank you, Mr. Colvis, for your insight, your knowledge, your experience, your poising compassion for everyone here at Linden Public Schools. I personally will miss the stories that he would tell and the way he could make us laugh when sometimes he needed it the most. I consider her a blessing to have had him in my life, creating forever memories. Mr. Colvis, you'll be missed terribly by so many. May he rest in peace.
Hello?
I do, really quick, this is, so interesting. So, there was, the first time I think he ran, there was a debate. And of course, everybody knows that I'm not a fan of the protest, so that was my question, what, you know, how he felt about it. And he happened to agree with me, so he had me at that. He truly was a great man, an educator who carried out kids. I'd like to offer my condolences to the Colvis family.
And I would just like to add, I've known, I've known Jack for most of his teaching career. He started here in seventy-one, my wife started teaching here in sixty-nine. So, we ran into each other on occasion either at the factory bowling league or any events that they might, dances or things like that they had. And through evol- evolution, he wound up being my wife's boss at McManus. And so we knew each other that way. We also ran into each other as band pals. His younger son was a senior and my oldest was a freshman. So we ran into each other there. What Dr. Rotozy just said about these stories and things like that is what I remember most about Jack. We were of a kindred spirit, so to speak, from the same era, more or less. As a matter of fact, I was only three months older than him. So, it kinda puts a little mark on our own mortality. I will miss him dearly and his wife Nancy and his two children and grandchildren, stuff like that. My condolences to the whole family.
Right, item four is a retirement. Dr. Rotozy?
Thank you, Mr. Tapaleski. Julia Flaherty started her career as an elementary school teacher in nineteen ninety-nine in Linden. She taught fourth and fifth grade at schools four, six, and ten. Wish her all the best in her retirement, thank you, Mr. Tapaleski.
Item five is amendments to past board operations. Item six is the resignation of following staff. Item seven is appoint the following staff. Item eight is to approve following leave of absence. Item nine is to recognize and graduate the teachers that we just did. Item ten is to approve the transfer of staff. Item eleven is approve the transfer of the following staff, starting in September. Item twelve is to appoint the following childcare workers for the eighteen-nineteen school year. Item thirteen is to reappoint the following twelve-month administrators for the eighteen-nineteen year. Item fourteen is to reappoint the following ten-month personnel.
It's a long list.
And B is twelve-month personnel. Item fifteen is reappoint and award employment contract to following members for eighteen-nineteen school year. Item sixteen is authorize annual appointment agreement for the unclassified personnel listed. Seventeen is reappoint the following department chairman for the chairpersons for the eighteen-nineteen year. Item eighteen is reappoint an award employment contract following staff member for the eighteen-nineteen school year. Item nineteen is to reappoint the following secretary of staff for the eighteen-nineteen school year. Twenty is to reappoint, is to reappoint award employment contract to following staff member for the eighteen-nineteen school year. Twenty-one is to reappoint the following staff. Twenty-two is to reappoint non-tenure managed personnel. Twenty-three is to reappoint the following non-tenure custodians. Twenty-four is to reappoint the following full-time parent professionals. Twenty-five is to reappoint the following part-time school aides. Twenty-six is appoint all part-time aides and part-time school aide substitutes for the eighteen-nineteen school year. Twenty-seven is appoint the following staff member as a basketball coach for the elementary intermural. Twenty-eight is appoint the following staff as district mentors. Twenty-nine is appoint the following staff as substitute teachers for remedial reading program. Thirty is appoint the following staff for Title Three ESL Summer Tutorial Program. Thirty-one is appoint the following staff members for the extended school year program. Thirty-two is appoint the following staff to process the district's two thousand and eighteen summer printing order. Thirty-three is appoint the following staff for summer work from July to August two thousand and eighteen for the mathematics curriculum realignment and professional development plan. Thirty-four is regularly appoint the following home instructors. Thirty-five is appoint the following home instructors for this year. Thirty-six is appoint the following home instructors for next year. Thirty-seven is approve additional summer work from June twenty-sixth to August ninety for the following social workers that are per diem rate. Thirty-eight is appoint the following staff to work additional hours during summer registration. Thirty-nine is approve, approval to conduct a sixth-grade orientation program at McManus on June fourth and Soulman School on June fourth for the current fifth grade. Forty is appoint staff listed to support the EMAP program at the Linden School for eighteen-nineteen school year. Forty-one is approval of additional summer work for the following people. Forty-two is approve additional summer work from June twenty-sixth to August thirty-first for the following attendance officers. Forty-three is grant permission for following physicians for physical exams. Forty-four is school nurses for medical bus aides. Forty-five is the following staff to work athletic ticket sales. Forty-six is appoint staff for athletic security detail. Forty-seven is appoint the following staff for interscholastic athletic programs at the high school and middle school. Coaches, A, B, C, and D. Forty-eight is to appoint the following staff for the eighteen-nineteen interscholastic intermural at the high school and the middle schools. Forty-nine is a resolution for, on one qualitative goal for the superintendent. Fifty is approve sports staff services at fifteen, twelve-grade home room teachers and fifteen security personnel in the event that the inclement weather on graduation and we have to move graduation to the high school in the evening. Fifty-one is to authorize and collect donations six days for an employee. Fifty-two is to reappoint following parent professionals as substitute teachers. Fifty-three is to approve the following revised job description. Fifty-four is to reappoint the following substitute parent professionals. Fifty-five is to reappoint the following aides. Fifty-six is to reappoint the following substitute, or fifty-seven is to appoint the following staff as substitutes for before-and-after program. Fifty-eight is to appoint the following substitute custodians. Fifty-nine is to appoint the following substitute custodians for next year. Sixty is to appoint the following substitutes for the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen school years listed, fully certified substitutes. Sixty-one is to reappoint the following substitutes for this year. And sixty-two is to reappoint the following substitutes for next year. That's it. I move Management Operations Reports one through sixty-two and see to second.
Roll call.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mrs. Welch?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch? Yes to all but no on eighteen. Mrs. Guillaume?
Yes to all and no on eighteen. Epstein on forty-nine and on fifty-three.
Mrs. Kozak?
Yes to all with the exception of eighteen and fifty-three no, and Epstein on forty-nine.
Mr. Martuzzi?
No on eighteen and fifty-three, yes on the rest.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes. Support Operations, Mr. Martuzzi. Don.
Mrs. Viviano?
Yes.
Sorry.
You waiting for me?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you were in conflict with the attorney, I'm sorry.
Okay, on Support Operations Report, the Support Operations Committee upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools and business administrative board, has asked the following motions to the Board of Education for approval. I'd like to move one through fifty-four on finance and one through thirteen on facilities and ask for a second.
Roll call.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mrs. Welch?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviano?
Yes.
Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Guillaume?
Yes.
Mrs. Kozak?
Yes to all with the exception of thirty-seven, no.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes to all with the exception of number thirty and second. That's done.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes. Planning Policy, Mrs. Shahad?
There's nothing for this morning, thank you.
Negotiations, Mrs. Wong is not here. I mean, we didn't have any meetings since the last negotiating session. We've had some mistakes, we were supposed to negotiate yesterday. Okay, EST preparation, I suppose, who's Mrs. Birch?
Yes, I'll start with our current EST meeting we had at May fourteenth at seven PM at the Administration Building. We had representation from schools one, six, nine, ten, Soul, McManus, and High School. Guest speakers were Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Tardifeta, Mr. Sullivan, and Mrs. Colvis. They discussed in length the summer math and reading programs for our children. There was a lot of back and forth good conversation that helped clear up some of the concerns and some of the misconceptions some of the parents had about the summer reading program and math program. The administrators were able to shed some light on how and why the programs are run and the way they are run. And it was an extremely informative session and we thanked them for their valuable insight and taking the time to speak with us. As always, we like to have open discussions with our guest speakers so that concerns can be brought to them and that they may know about what's going on and what they can address. We're giving some suggestions, some ideas, and things that they could possibly look into. So if you do have the time, please, even if you just come out for our guest speakers, it would mean a lot to all. Although we would love to have everyone for the entire meeting, we also entice you with refreshments. Although the past two meetings, there were no groundies and I think my parents are gonna start to revolt, so we gotta... So we got into getting those brownies back. There were some concerns about the last night at Soul. There were some concerns about some parking issues for teachers and parents over at school six. There were some concerns about maybe sending out report cards because they were talking about how the district was full to capacity and maybe if we sent out some literature that if it does get returned, we can see who possibly may not live here. There were some concerns about the aftercare playground dismissal and the safety of the children and staff while dismissing from the playground and also dismissing from aftercare while in the building. The parents talked about the cleanliness of the bathrooms and how they feel they really would like to see them clean and updated. Then some of the parents had some concerns about the elementary school schedule. They heard some whispers that there's going to be some changes being made and they wanted to know what would be happening with the elementary schools. McManus, they were concerned about the setting up of the park and what classes the kids would be missing and would they be missing classes every day, the same classes every day. Some of the good things that were discussed that there were so many exciting things going on at McManus. Sixth and seventh grade are going to be having fun days. Each grade now will have a fun day and they have an ice cream truck that's lined up. So the PTA is very excited about that. They also talked about Broadway Night, which is this Thursday, so they were excited about that and asked for you to come out and see it and support it. The parents were very, very happy that the votes for the summer reading program were provided to the high school students and the teachers. They would like to see at our next meeting or for meetings in the future, some of the principals and vice principals. Dr. Otulsi and I sit down after the meetings and we discuss what takes place during the meetings and by this point, he has either taken care of some of the concerns and he's looking into others and we always get back to the parents as soon as possible and we recap at our next meeting. So please come out, come to our next meeting. It's going to be Tuesday, June fifth. Mrs. Cleary will be speaking about the new elementary school schedule and hopefully we will have brownies at our next meeting. So come out and join us. That concludes my parent EST report, Mr. President.
Thank you, and the high school you just met?
I have their report, yes, just give me a second. Mr. Fekidi is our advisor. We met at the LHS Confucius Room in the media center at nine AM on Friday, May eighteenth. We had four freshmen, two sophomores, three juniors, and two seniors, nine ladies and two gentlemen. We had some cafeteria concerns. They said that the last lunch usually kind of gets the raw end of the stick when it comes to food. There's either not enough or the food quality isn't up to par. They're asking for the tables to be wiped down a little bit better. They are happy that the smoothies are being, they're having them consistently and they are giving them notice as to when they are going to be having them and that there are different sizes. They asked if they could put a sign at the top of the doors here at the high school to give the parents more direction on what they need to do when they come to the window, whether it be see Mr. Powell to get in because they say as they're coming in, there's some confusion with the adults. There was also some confusion with the ROTC door and what door to use, either the front door or the ROTC door or ROTC room door. There was some, of course, there was some bathroom concerns, the cleanliness. They said there were some puddles and leaks in one of his stalls on the first floor, girls' bathroom. The sink doesn't work, it hasn't worked from the beginning of the year. The girls' locker room, they said the sewer keeps backing up and needs to be snaked. They said the bathroom doors and the boys' room locker doors swing in instead of out and it's a very tight fit to try to get through. No locks in the locker rooms, still asking for mirrors in all of the restrooms and if we could possibly keep the soap and the toilet paper and all of that stocked for them. And they were concerned at the third floor bathroom next to Mr. Krill's has it been open pretty much all year? They were concerned that the volleyball net at Wilson Recreation was a little tattered and torn. So we'll be placing a color recreation to see if they can fix that. They also were very interested, obviously, that there was a lot of guest speakers that come to the high school and they wanted to know if there could be a place that the guest speakers can leave their cards or literature because some of the students can't stay after the assemblies to speak with the guest speakers. If they can just go and pick up some of their information and maybe contact them at a later date. They were concerned about the academy building and the ringing of the bells at the end of the day. And they said they were having some issues with Genesis in the main building. They said it could be accessed in the academy building, but they were having a hard time doing it in the main building. Law day, they said, was awesome and amazing and they wanted to be opened up to everyone. They said it should be a day that everyone should be able to experience. The history teachers, I believe, are involved and it's from nine to twelve. So they are hoping that it would be opened up. World language induction ceremonies, they said, went very well. The dance concert was impressive, they had great dance moves. They were excited about all the senior activities taking place, the prom coming up, banquet graduation, the picnic for the entire school on June eighth. At the end of our meeting, Mrs. Hori was being face time with all of us to discuss the concerns. Some concerns have already been taken care of, others are being looked into. And I'd like to thank Mr. Fekidi and Mrs. Hori for their support of the children and for allowing us to have this time with the students to hear concerns and the great things that have gone on in the districts. Our last meeting for the school year will be June fourth at nine AM at the high school. And that concludes my report, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Birch. EST for middle school students, Ms. Dionne?
We didn't have, we didn't see them this month due to scheduling of a park.
All right, thank you. If that makes me out. EST for special admin, Mr. Martusek?
Nothing for this month, I'm afraid, June.
Nothing for June. And service commission, Ms. Dionne?
I actually attended, so we, the meeting was held on May second. We had a presentation given by Carrie Gattello, who was the director of curriculum. She presented on the curriculum and study goals for the upcoming school year as well as reviewing the goals that were set for this school year and how they met or exceeded them. And basically, the purpose of studying these goals and changing the curriculum is to set the bar higher to, you know, push the student farther and, you know, they're meeting all the goals and not exceeding them. So that was the main presentation. Another takeaway was that we voted on the contract for the business administrator at that meeting as well. So the next meeting is coming up, the first week of June.
Thank you, Ms. Kozak. Let's see, it's state and county delegate, that's me. We had a county meeting last Wednesday. The representative from the twentieth district, Annette Carano, I think her name is. She's not ours, so I don't remember. Is that right? Is that right? Is that so? Yeah, she was there to speak to the board members and then there was recognition for the board members for your service and for achieving certain goals in education for board members. The next morning, I traveled to Trenton for the legislative day. At the legislative day, we had a discussion between a Democratic and Republican delegate from the assembly answering some questions about park testing and funding and things of that nature. The keynote speaker, once again, was Steve Sweeney, who was the president of the state senate. And he was addressing funding for schools. And if you are, if you may not be aware, Senator Sweeney is a big advocate of using the formula that was created back in 2008, which has never been fully implemented. And last year, you might recall that the state government shut down for a few days because they weren't able to settle the budget before the end of June. The word is if the, if the governor doesn't go along with what the senate and house have planned, assembly have planned because they think they know what they're doing, it may shut down again. Because Senator Sweeney says he will not move forward on the budget unless the school funding formula isn't implemented properly. That's good for us, that's all I can say. It may not be good for state workers if they close the state down again. But look around June fifteenth, if it's not settled by June fifteenth, we may be in for the wall. The delegate assembly was Saturday, I was not able to attend. There were only two items and I haven't checked, so I will fill you guys in on what the DA did at the next, at the June meeting. That concludes my report. No safety committee, we already did that. Comments from board members? Mrs. Viviana?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tomorrow night, May twenty-third, the Linden High School Music Touring Tour. Under the direction of Wayne Cosby, will be performing at the Linden Library. This is a very talented group of young men and women and I'd like to invite everybody to come out and join us. We'll be in the Columbia Bank Room on the third floor at seven PM. Also, since Mrs. Patagonia was still here, I miss you. But I want to let you all know what I just told her and her family. My daughter is now a senior. When she was a freshman, she was invited by the staff of the high school to attend Italy under a special program that Mrs. Patagonia ran on a volunteer basis. He told her over the summertime, we'd be going to Italy, to Mrs. Patagonia's hometown, and they would be teaching the students English. The students studied for several weeks, they were taught teaching techniques, and they came up with various lesson plans to teach to the students. And they traveled to Italy for, I think, three weeks. This trip had such an impact on my daughter that for the next three years, she changed her mind on her major. She is now going to be studying international relations and minoring in history. And she purposely picked a college that had a study abroad program. So my daughter will be attending to a college and her goal is to either move to Europe, thank you very much. And although she's not entirely sure what she's doing with her major, she does plan on moving forward with Mrs. Patagonia's steps and somehow teaching children. So thank you very much to the Patagonia family for everything you did for my daughter.
Any other comments on this side of it?
I just wanted to say, thank you, Mr. Topaleski and obviously, Dr. Otulsi for honoring the teachers. I think that was extremely consistent and kind of you to step forward for us. It was nice to see some of my old principals and teachers be acknowledged for their dedication to the district. So thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Welsh?
On May thirtieth, it's a Wednesday evening, at the Linden Professional Development Resource Center on Edgewood Road, there's going to be a park roundtable sponsored by the NJDOE and also in conjunction with NJEA. For anybody who's interested in speaking, you don't have to be an NJEA member. You could be any person that is interested in speaking about the park testing. And you have to go to one of those websites, the NJEA or NJDOE to register if you're interested. It's from sixteen. And if you would like more information, you can see me after the meeting. And I just have one other comment. I just wanted to say, I saw on our Facebook page, the Linden Public Schools Facebook page recently, I think it was today or yesterday, about Mr. Candia at school six, who is fasting for Ramadan with one of his students. And I think that's really something that is amazing and it really brings positive attention to our schools. And I just wanted to say that I would have not known that if it wasn't for Mr. Miller, who does such a fantastic job, you know, getting that information out there. So I appreciate that and I just wish, you know, I know you would continue to do that great job, Mr. Miller. Thank you.
I also would like to thank Mr. Miller for all that he does. He shows up at every function we have or at least tries to be. He's at every school, I see him all the time. He keeps me updated on Twitter on what's taking place if I can't be there for more purposes. Mr. Miller, thank you and we appreciate everything you do.
Mr. Martusek?
Yeah, I just, I should add in the audience, I gotta mention this story and I tell this story because when I see you. Back in the early eighties, Alfie and myself, Mr. Light, you know, we traveled through Europe, went Easter vacation for eleven days, went to Rome, Switzerland, whatever the case. And the night, one night, we were going from Switzerland, actually, to France. And at that time, you had a number of students on the bus that were of Polish descent. They had their passports, but they had to ask them how to be card. And a lot of nonsense was going on between the borders. So we actually ended up getting to the border at France and Switzerland at about ten o'clock at night. And guards get on the bus with guns and everything else, told us to get out. We're not going anywhere. Whatever you said to them, whatever you said to them, we were going to get locked in up there, whatever the case. It worked and I thank you because God willing, it would happen to all of us that time. We had to travel two hundred miles down the coast of France to Paris at night. But whatever you said to them, I still thank you for that because I have no way you would have ever.
Anybody else? All right, see. Just want to congratulate our newest principal who's in the audience tonight. Based on my recommendation, Mr. Walker, the board voted yes on your appointment tonight. Want to wish you all the best. I have full confidence in you. I know you do a great job. Good luck, Mr. Walker. I did send too old, he graduated my daughter.
Can I just jump in really quick? My daughter will kill me if I don't mention that Broadway Night at McManus on Thursday. There's some kids in the audience here that are going to be participating. So if you're interested, come out, sorry, I forgot to, and it's also my daughter's birthday. Sorry, Ben.
Can I? Mrs. Welsh, would you like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I promised Ram wasn't going to say that much, but I lied, I guess. I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.